Okay, this is planning board for May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Todd, you wanna? Start us off with attendance.
Sure thing, sure thing. General call attendance vote. I'll begin with Chair Michael Gork.
Vice Chair, present.
Yes, apologies, apologies. Present, Mr. Romer.
Here.
Let's see, Mr. Groner.
Present.
Good to see you and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Barr.
Yeah.
And I believe, I have to ask if Mr. Nayland is here, though I don't believe he's present yet. We'll keep an eye out for him to pop in later. But with that, we have four out of five attendants, sir.
Okay, so first item of business, always after town meeting is board reorganization. And with our beloved Pete Driscoll no longer with us, we need to elect a new chair and vice chair.
So imagine he's with us, just not in the capacity of your.
Really don't, don't know about beloved, but it's been a pleasure, so.
Thank you, Pete. So as, as Vice Chair the past year, I am willing to, to be the Chair this year, if that's amenable to the rest of the board.
Fine here.
We can entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that Michael Gore be elected as Chair of the Planning Board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Very good. With the second received, I'll begin a roll call vote. I'll begin with President Vice Chair Michael Gore.
Hi.
Mr. Romer.
Hi.
Mr. Groner.
Hi.
And Mr. Barr.
Hi.
With four out of five in the affirmative, motion passes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we also need to elect a Vice Chair. So if someone would be willing to perform those duties, which is basically filling in for me when I'm not available. If anyone is interested. Jim or Bob?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Interesting.
I'll second.
Very good.
Did someone make a motion? I'll make a motion to nominate Jim Barr as Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
Very good, very good. I'll begin, I'll begin a vote for that. I'll begin with Vice Chair, sorry, Chair, Mr. Gore.
Hi.
Mr. Roman.
Hi.
Mr. Groner.
Hi.
And Mr. Barr.
Hi.
Very good. Congratulations, good sir. How are you?
Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, then we'd also like to welcome our newest elected member of the board, Austin. Grainer, Groner? I'm, I'm gonna mispronounce this every time, I think.
Uh, you can pronounce it Groner, although I'm told that's not the original pronunciation. It's the original pronunciation is. It's, yeah, that's right, correct, yeah.
Yep.
Same thing with Roman.
Yeah, my dad's, my dad's from there.
Thank you very much. It's, it's really nice to be here.
Congratulations on your election. So Todd, we have one final position of associate member who I believe we have someone in mind who's going to select for tomorrow. Is that correct?
That is correct. If you guys recall, at the same meeting where we first met, Mr. Grainer, we have Mr. Lau, which I will be, after the events of tonight, I'll be appearing at the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night to provide updates and kind of debrief with the Board of Selectmen for whatever occurs here tonight.
Have you been in contact with him? Is he gonna be at the meeting also?
I'm, I'm anticipating him to be there. We last spoke a couple of weeks ago. That was before my vacation, so I haven't been able to touch base with him this week, but I anticipate him to be there tomorrow night.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move on to Town Planner Report.
Oh, Mr. Chair, one moment. Do we have, is the board prepared to make a recommendation, yes or no, for Mr. Lau based on his previous appearance?
I'm certainly comfortable with, with doing that. The rest of the board is amenable.
I just joined, so what the other guy dropped out or?
Uh, no, so Austin Grainer was elected at Monday's town meeting.
Yep. I thought we were talking about associate.
Well, we are, right? So that, there were two people we were talking to a few weeks back. Austin was elected on Monday, and so we will appoint, I'm sorry, what's the, what's the first name?
Uh, Mr. Lau, it's Matthew, if I recall. Believe it's. Uh, Mr. Lau, the applicant that we previously had.
Oh, but there was, there was a third person too that we talked to, right?
I don't remember that.
Yeah, there was another guy who joined as well, but whatever, I'm fine with the first guy.
There were a couple of people for the master planner.
Yeah, that, that was.
For master plan.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just double checking, looking at previous agendas to see if I'm a.
No, it's fine. I was by wrong.
Not to worry, not to worry.
Uh, do you have a bio for Mr. Lau?
I do have a copy of his, of his expression of interest, the volunteer form. I do have that.
Okay. Anything beyond that?
Uh, nothing beyond that, sir.
Another opportunity to hit LinkedIn.
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed. Alrighty. So I'm just digging through previous agenda.
Uh, Michael Lau, oh yeah, he was a project manager with.
That's correct, that's correct.
An engineering company is, yeah, it was very good.
Yeah, exactly. He's, he's used to working on large scale infrastructure projects, which is directly translatable and transferable.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, we're kind of spoiled for skills. This is great. I love it.
Um, okay, if someone would like to make a motion to recommend the appointment of Michael Lau as Associate Member?
I would like to make that motion to appoint Michael Lau. Recommend the appointment of Michael Lau as an Associate Member of Planning Board to the Selectmen.
Second.
Very good. I'll begin the, a vote to that effect. I'll begin with Chair Gore.
Hi.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Roman.
Hi.
Mr. Groner.
Hi.
Now that Eric is here, good sir Eric.
Hi.
And Mr. Barr.
Hi. I'm my custom, I'm my customary five minutes late.
Eh, six of one half dozen the others.
Just, just tell me the meeting starts at six fifty-five.
You laugh, you think I won't. Okay, very good. Motion carries. I will, I'll have that communicated to the B O S tomorrow.
But, um, so now we can go ahead with Town Planner Report.
Very good, very good. Let me just get out of that. Okay, so just getting it from my backup to speed. I'm coming back, of course, from four days of vacation from last week. So of course, I've been thrown off the boat again to get caught up with emails. I came in yesterday morning to a hundred and sixteen emails in my inbox, you know, nothing big. I was able to, after trimming that down, get it down to seventy-six. I'm proud to say that all the emails that I've received, I have since finished off with my inbox is gloriously clean for the moment. It won't remain that way, but at least for now, I can, I can wallow in that kind of situation. With that, I have sent correspondence over to Attorney Falk relating to some of the items that we likely will be discussing tonight. However, um, there hasn't been any formal determination there. I'll be continuing conversations with Attorney Falk to get his final, final opinions on the matters that we're gonna be discussing later. With that, we have received, as you guys well know, we have received the second half of the peer review, which is relating to road acceptance items. Those are items that we'll be discussing later on tonight, as you can see on the agenda reflected at the last item. But aside from that, all is well that continues. Well, we do have, as I've, as explained before, we are anticipating a special permit application for United Cultivation. After the, after the standard notice process, they're likely going to be appearing on, not next meeting, but the meeting thereafter on the seventh of June. I'm still making sure that all those wheels are moving as they need to, making sure that the editor of the paper is in communication with the applicant, et cetera, all the boring behind the scenes stuff. Uh, but they will likely be appearing for that hearing on the seventh. And aside from that, I'm still waiting to hear also on some other rumblings I've heard for future special permits, but as they haven't coalesced into an application, it's a little premature to talk about them yet. Aside from that, all's well is, goes well, I guess.
Okay, so just to clarify, that is the special permit for marijuana dispensary in the Country Covered Plaza.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's the, just right off the, right off the off ramp there, yeah.
Okay, excellent. So we can move right into our first item of business, the Continued Scenic Road Shade Tree Hearing for lots seven and eight Meadow Road.
Okay, uh, to the Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I am in communication with, with the applicant and their engineering team, as well as Randy Heglin, our D P W Director, of course, and we are due to meet with that team tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock and to go over some potential engineering solutions and ameliorations to the issues there. So I would recommend that this item be continued to the next meeting after they presented whatever engineering solutions they have in mind.
Um, yeah, I'm good with that. Bob, are you going to that meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, we'll leave it at that then. So someone look to make a motion. Todd, I think our next meeting is?
Twenty-fourth, good sir.
May twenty-fourth. So I'm gonna need someone to be my, my motion person this season. Crickets.
Okay, so make a motion that the um, tree hearing, shade tree hearing for lots seven and eight on Meadow Road be continued to our next meeting on May twenty-fourth.
Second.
Very good. I will begin roll call vote. I will begin with Chair Gore.
Hi.
Mr. Bob Romer.
Hi.
Mr. Grainer.
Hi.
Mr. Nayland.
Hi.
And Mr. Barr.
Hi.
Very good. With that, motion carries. This item be moved to the twenty-fourth. I'll place it at the, probably the first item on the agenda after, after meeting.
I was shooting for the second person, that's why I was being quiet.
Okay, not to worry, not to worry. All right.
Um, okay, uh, next item of business is the Continued Definitive Subdivision Plan, Fosford, for South Bolton Road.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. I do have updates as I sent over um, their draft form of surety to Town Council as required. Town Council has been a little delayed in their response, but they have assembled some thoughts and they're gonna be getting, they sent an initial evaluation over to me today. And then after I speak with him tomorrow afternoon, I expect we'll have some resolution on that issue there. From that, of course, there's a different process that goes after. They still have to go through the rest of the, rest of the hearing process. And then once, if Town Council finds that the draft form of surety is acceptable, of course, that will be subject to the terms and conditions of whatever proposed or approved conditions are represented within the, the certificate of approval. So those kind of go a little bit hand in hand in that way. So with that, the rest of the hearing will proceed as standard. And just to make sure that everyone is covered up to speed, we'll have them represent all of the items in one larger, in one larger presentation. And then ideally, if the board so designs, they'll be able to act upon that within a future meeting.
Um, so Todd, just to be clear, the, so what you sent over, the covenant you sent to me earlier today, that was, was that our template and that we are sending that to Mr. Martha?
Well, that was sent, that was, that was what was sent to me from the applicant. It looks a little boilerplate, but that's standard. Um, that there is what I had Council Falk review, a review, and he's sending me his opinions on that, uh, probably first thing in the morning.
Okay, so we haven't got that part of it yet.
I've had some communications with Council Falk, but I'm looking to have some additional phone calls with him to go over some of the minutia contained within it. Um, and provided that passes muster with him and he has no expressed concerns, we can continue with the hearing as standard.
Okay, and then again, sort of what's left um, from Planning Board perspective, I imagine they're gonna wanna start construction at some point is is our vote the last thing or are they still waiting on Concom for?
Um, I do believe they're still going through conservation, because there is some, um, some sense, some sensitive environmental resource areas present. Uh, if you remember the discussion that was, uh, that was sent over several weeks ago relating to the, the marble salamander that is a threatened or endangered species there. And they still have, they still have some other hurdles to go through on the conservation of the things. Uh, forgive me if I'm not privy to all of them, but I do know they have some other hanging issues with conservation relating to the open space areas.
Um, but the surety was kind of the last thing we were waiting for, so next step is to kind of review their, their full plan.
Exactly. Go over any potential, any potential conditions or waiver requests that they may have. Um, really, it's just the, the last hanging items that need to be, need to be addressed. Um, and again, for those that are not familiar, um, the, the relevant citation is from the subdivision regulations of the Town of Bolton, section forty-three, forty, point two, to go over that specific type of surety that they've requested.
Um, I don't recall what, do they, what waivers did they ask for?
Um, it's contained within their application. Forgive me if I don't have that right in front of me.
That's, I can look it up later, and that's the.
Yes, it's, it's all there, present on the application packet that was placed to the website there.
Okay. Okay, I'll do that. So, sorry, go ahead.
No, it's quite, it's quite all right. I was just saying that's found within the packet placed upon the website under current projects.
Okay, um, so it sounds like this is also continued until our May twenty-fourth meeting.
Uh, that's correct. Um, that should give ample time to get some of the, the hanging and relevant items kind of put together into one package. And then if I have time, I'll be able to speak with the applicant and let them know exactly what's expected of them in two weeks' time.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion for that.
Bueller? I say we make Austin do it. You know, throw him off the boat. I might need a few more, a few more of those to get the hang of it. It's quite all right, but I'm just, I'm just joshing you.
Okay, let me make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. That the hearing for the definitive subdivision plan for minor residential development for Daniel Molta, special permit for property identified in Bolton Assessors Map Two C as parcel twenty-three be continued to our meeting on the twenty-fourth of May.
Second.
Very good. With a second, I'll begin roll call. I'll begin with Chairman Gore.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Roman.
Hi.
Mr. Grainer.
Hi.
Mr. Nayland.
Hi.
Mr. Barr.
Hi.
Very good. With that, the motion carries. This item will be pushed to item two on the date of the twenty-fourth.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, Central Mills Estate as built review discussion and light installation determination. Um, so it looks like we have Andy with us.
You too.
Um, I would like to do the first or the second part first and talk about the light installation, because we need to have some closure on this. Um, so Todd, I'm gonna summarize where we're at with the light.
Sure.
And you tell me if I'm right or wrong. Um, so at this point, the D R B, some number of years ago, Design Review Board, selected a light for the area um, that was presumably okay with the town. Um, our new D P W Director does not feel that it's, um, really a street light meant to go in the right of way. It's more of a decorative light. And so our options at this point are to, um, require them to get a different light that meets what our D P W, the standards of our D P W to put into the town right away to put the light that was purchased into the private property of the development and it becomes owned and managed by the H O A and C M E. Um, or third is that we waive the requirement to have a, a street light at that spot. That, about summing up?
Uh, that's, that's nuts and bolts, pretty close. Um, uh, Mr. Heglin, our D P W Director, didn't deem it to be a decorative light. He deemed it to be more akin to like a, like a parking lot light. Um, and also, um, it's important to note that other subdivisions of similar size uh, within its, within the town limits of Bolton also do not have analogous lights present. They're simply not illuminated at that point. And there's a, there's a point to be made that as there hasn't been any safety issues yet in the six-ish, seven-ish years that they've been without said light, um, is a pretty potent reason to, um, to simply waive the requirement of its installation period.
Yeah, I know we, we waived it at least at, um, I'm always gonna confuse the name, the, the one seventeen subdivision, uh, goose pond path. That, that's tad more, correct?
Ten, that's correct.
I believe we waived it for that, the installation. So I, I'm open to hearing other members of the board, um, their opinion. I'm, I'm of the mind that we waive the requirement for the light at this point. Um, it's kind of dragged on. Uh, and it's, it's, you know, certainly not fair to the applicant that we specified, you know, our own design review board specified one light and, and now they don't want that. So um, I'm willing to waive that requirement for the subdivision. If anyone else on the board has, uh, thoughts or feelings on it.
Well, I remember, I, I thought that a lot of the residents in the area do not want the light to be.
That's, that is almost always the case in every subdivision that we do. Is that the, the residents typically don't want lights in this. So I think our, our rules and regs um, say one light at the entrance and one light towards the, at some point within the the subdivision. And we end up waiving them because neighbors and, and abutters typically don't want them. So.
Yeah. Well. But on the other hand, we also have the chief, was it the chief of police? So the, um.
D P W.
D P W wanted the light there just for safety reasons. So.
Yes, um, oh, it's to the Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I also extended invitations for Public Safety Department Heads, including, uh, Mr. Heglin to opine on the issue uh, before, two weeks ago, in anticipation for this meeting tonight. The only department head that did reply to me was Mr. Heglin, um, both the Fire Chief and, and Police Chief did not respond.
Go ahead, Bob. You wanted to say something?
No, you just said it. No, I was curious about if it's a public safety issue, what does public safety have to say about it?
Yeah, and I did, um, on that thought as well, I did in that email to both of them, I let them know that if we don't hear from them within that fourteen day period, that'll just be taken as no comment. So.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep, and Todd, to your point, it's, you know, it's been like this for multiple seven plus years. I've lost track at this point, but.
Thereabouts, you know.
Yeah.
Longer than I've been.
So, um, how do we, do we just make a motion to waive the requirement for a street light or do we need to?
You're making a determination or a finding in fact, uh, or you can just entertain a motion to waive this particular provision within the approved subdivision plans, and that's all that's really needed.
Okay, someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
I make a motion to waive the, uh, street light towards the, uh, front of the subdivision, uh, from the special permit for Central Mills Estates.
On the approved subdivision plans.
On the approved subdivision plans, of Central Mills.
I'll second.
Oh.
Very good. Austin with his inaugural second. It's a pun there. So I will entertain a roll call vote for the motion. I will begin with Chairman Gore.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Roman.
Hi.
Mr. Grainer.
Hi.
Mr. Nayland.
Hi.
And Mr. Barr.
Hi.
With that, the motion carries this, the installation of this light is to be waived.
Okay, um, now let's get on to the as-built review discussion. Todd, could you, if you have the, um, the comments, maybe you could bring those up?
I can. Give me one quick moment and I can share my screen.
So there's, there's thirteen recommendations in the final report. And I don't, we don't need to go through all of them at this point, but just to have them up for reference.
Sure, give me one quick second. I have to, I'm in the middle of a different project, so give me one second here.
Andy, um, if you can come off mute, have you had a chance to read through these, these comments?
Yes, I have.
Any questions, concerns with them?
I would say the only thing I would ask is that, uh, we, we cleaned the ponds previously, a couple of years ago, after the roads were paved. That was, that was done recently, really recently, I mean.
So that is, um, but once he brings up the.
I'm happy, I'm cleaning out the areas where the ponds, you know, like the water exits.
Number seven, Mike. There we go. Right there. Actually, number seven, there we go.
Certainly that.
Can everyone read that all right?
We can check those areas, but I.
Yeah, if you wanna scroll down.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Cleaning bottom to the ponds is sort of a significant amount of work. We had already done that.
Um. Okay, so I mean, we'll need to see what, how much is in there. So, so I think for the, you know, just kind of, uh, level set here. So, you know, the, the report is, is pretty good for the most part. There's no, no major problems that need to be addressed in it. It's, you know, standard things that we do um, as we close out a subdivision, um, and accept roads. Uh, minor things need to be done. The, the next step at this point is that D P W takes this list and does their own kind of walkthrough of the property. Um, I know they had made a couple of comments a few months back on just a drive through. So, so that list that D P W generates to, to me should be the final list of steps required.
Um, to the Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Don't forget about comment eight regarding wetland areas being approved by Concom and a certificate of compliance being issued and recorded at registry. That's super important. Don't forget about that.
And, and I assume the Concom piece is, is separate and.
It is. They're separate but parallel, but it can't be forgotten.
Yep, yep, no, for sure. But for the things that we're in charge of.
Sure.
Or overseeing at the moment. Um, and so the, you know, for the, for Andy, you know, the, the plan is to have comments from the D P W kind of as soon as possible. I don't know, Todd, were you able to to get in touch with, uh, with Randy?
Yes, I did. When, I was just actually, after, after I was off the phone with you, I gave him a ring immediately thereafter. Uh, and Randy is in receipt of this exact memo here, uh, this report. And he's in the middle of going through on his end, making sure that, uh, just getting kind of an order of operations for which items to check on first. So he's aware.
Okay, and did he, was he able to give us any sort of date or timeline?
Not at this time. He said it's, it's impossible to know until he actually begins doing the review process, then he'll be able to give a better idea.
Like, I mean.
It shouldn't be more than, they should have it ready by next meeting. I think that's a very comfortable thing to say.
Yeah, that's, and that's kind of what I'm looking for is what the, what the timeline of things is.
Yes, sir.
Um. So Andy, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I just, there's nothing really, I mean, I, nothing really significant on the niche report that that I, you know, didn't know of or didn't expect, except for cleaning the ponds, the bottom of the ponds.
And now, again, if there's something, if there's something on here listed, like you're, you're gonna have to do it.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So.
Even if it was already done, though.
Well, I don't know when, I mean, you know, Andy, the, this is the process for street acceptance.
Yes.
Very.
And it's also to the Chair, if I may?
Yes.
It's important to communicate that the, uh, the matters, for example, of the, uh, the catch basin hoods um, and the relevant maintenance that fills with sediment that occurs just for this, for the sake of them in operation, sediment will accrue and accumulate by process. Um, I do know that D P W, um, is going to be in agreement with the general. Um, I do know that DPW um, is going to be uh in agreement with the general findings here, the general comments. It's also important to keep in mind that updated plans after this is done is submitted. Um, as it sit, as it situates right at the bottom here. Niche engineering notes that the subdivision plan is in general conformance with the approved plans, that's great. And recommends that the applicant uh provides an updated plan for review prior to street acceptance, so we're gonna need an updated plan. That demonstrates that all of the recommendations in terms of notation, et cetera, are completed. And uh, and satisfactory before they'll be able to be brought up for acceptance by the town. So that's just super important, it's very small, um, in terms of text, but it's incredibly critical in terms of process. And this entire process is uh. It needs to be done by the letter, it does.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're, hopefully, you know, we've said this many years, but. Hopefully, this is the year we're gonna make the final push on this and, and uh. Get these roads accepted, so I would recommend doing everything, the letter of what is recommended. Um, and we'll see what, what DPW says when they do their inspection.
Hmm.
Any questions or comments um, from the board about? The review?
No.
Anyone? Go ahead, Todd.
I'm sorry about that, um, I think it's also important to note that within the summary, the very first line. Um, the peer reviewer notes that the subdivision plan is in general conformance with the approved plans. That's, that's not nothing, that's actually a very significantly uh positive thing to note. That uh largely uh what has been built and what exists there is largely in conformity with uh what was sought out. What, six, seven years ago now? Um, all that remains is the marching orders, which is uh effectively tasks one through thirteen. So, once all of those thirteen items are done, um, this should uh by the applicant, this should be uh much smoother from there, I think.
Yeah, that, it's all good news, this, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
Agreed.
Um, any questions from the audience?
I have a question.
Uh. Identify yourself?
Yeah, this is Kai Chong, I'm a resident. In Century Mill, uh, I've been living in Century Mill in Bolton for about ten years, so. I've lived through the pain, along with Mr. Ballow, who I see is also online. Um, and I actually have written the town planner a few days ago and appreciate the response. And I guess I have a more general question, and it said asking. Um, for how, like, what could be done? So from my point of view, and I think I speak for at least some residents. Uh, it's been extraordinarily frustrating, um, and I feel like. As re- residents, we are somewhat caught between the town and the developer. Um, I, I'm in no way trying to uh, you know, make excuses for uh, for developer, I think. There are lots of things that going on, should have been done, was not done. But where we are now is, it's ten years into this development, I've lived here for ten years. Um, I think I looked up our twenty twenty-two tax base for the community. Almost nine hundred thousand dollars yearly in property taxes, so there are a lot of people who are just frustrated. And so my ask of the town now is, I'd like to ask the town to give. The developer slash the HOA, which essentially is represent the residents. The list of. Items, the punch list, if you will, that you would agree to and the date by which we would all agree to. Um, cause then I think the residents can work on our side to make sure those things are done. So I see here, it's a list of thirteen things, although to be honest. I think I heard Andy say, well, yeah, but the basin's already been cleaned, and I don't know, maybe it has. So I don't actually know, so therefore, does it need to be done or not to be done? And so, I, I'm really asking the town to give. A really an official, if it's, you know, can be done by the town council, that would be great. But I think the neighborhood needs to know, what is the list of things, the date by which need to be done? And if those things are done by the date they need to be done, then the town will accept the roads, and I don't know if it's just these thirteen, it sounds like. After this list is done, there's DPW. I also know in the past, there's some other, you know, taxes and other fees that developer owes the town. And so, I, I'd feel like, I've lived for over ten years, I've been on some, many of these calls. And I don't know, what is, like, wh- what is the, uh, where is the finish line? So, does that make sense? I think I'm asking for the town to give the neighborhood residents. A comprehensive list, and maybe there's some.
Right here, right, so.
Yeah.
Here you go, here's the first, here's the first list.
No, no, not the first list, the entire.
Right, and as, as I mentioned, the next step, DPW will take this list, do their own inspection.
And then what?
They will, they will have their own list of things that, that they feel needs to be done before the town.
Then what happens after that? Does, does Andy owe the town any money that he has to pay?
So I, I don't like, I, I don't think we should talk about the tax issues at this meeting, cause it's not.
Well, that's okay, if you're saying, if you're saying that he, the money he owes the town is actually not a requirement for road acceptance. I think the residents will be thrilled, because that has not been the case up to this point.
I mean, I, I can't say that, that's.
Well, I need, well, I think it's fair for somebody representing the town of Bolton. To tell the residents, what are all the things that need to happen by, and by, by when? In order for the town to accept the roads, isn't that a very fair question to ask after ten years?
Yep, the, the tax question is important, and.
So we need to know, because I, we've wasted, I mean, I'll be honest, and John, feel free to jump in, we've wasted years. Trying to work on things on lists like this. While there may be other things that will never get addressed, or need some other way to get addressed. And so, I'm really asking the town, again, the town. Tell us what are all the things that need to be done, and by when, because then we can also work as a community. To get the developer to do things, or maybe do other thing, you know, finish whatever it is. I just feel like, I, I, I don't know, John, ma- maybe you know what the full list of things are, but it seems like, whatever that list. There's probably some negotiations involved, and even on this list, I'm not hearing Andy saying, oh yeah, I'm gonna do all thirteen of them. And I just want a void for all of us to keep perpetuating this insanity that's been going on for ten years.
Yeah, I mean, Chairman Gorf, if you don't mind, I could speak, John Ballow is here. Um, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, so, so let me start with, this is a great starting list, it's nothing surprising, cause it was on previous lists I've seen in previous years. Most of it's the same, um, I don't see that much that's different. Um, what I am disappointed at is it took ten plus weeks to get this done, when it should have been four. And I'm even more disappointed that DPW hasn't even started when we're two and a half months past, when we've been trying to do this, and they haven't even started doing their review. To give a list, so, I would have liked to see it done now, I, I do, I'm glad I heard that they're gonna push together DPW to do this by next meeting, and that's, that's great. If that's the final list, we can go by that guy, that's, I'm gonna ex, I'm gonna expect whatever at the la- next meeting we have the final list, and then we can work from that. Um, and, and, and we can work with the developer, we work with the town, we can work with Concom, however it is, but it's gonna come down to Andy having to pay for whatever the requirements are. And that's what we're gonna have to come up with and figure out. Um, putting, putting all that aside. And the two major items that you, well, you brought up one major item, two major items that I think it might have been meetings you haven't been at. Is back taxes for the phase that's not completed, which as residents, we believe that should be not part of road acceptance. Um, Chairman Gore said that's a selectman discussion, not a planning board discussion. So, uh, we can, we can table that till we get to the selectman discussion, we can't get there until the planning board. I guess, gives their finding and says they are in favor of, of road acceptance, then we have to have that fight with the split selectman. Um, and the second piece is affordable housing, which again, I think was. And not to rehash it, I, I feel like the planning board could have done a better job forcing that much earlier. Where we are where we are, where, where it's very default on, on an affordable housing lot being submitted or paid for. Uh, way past when it should have been, and I think it could have been enforced by the planning board earlier. But I think that needs to be put as a non requirement for road acceptance as well, and I think that has to be a, a selectman. Argument as well, so, once we get the full list, we can kind of talk about that guy, I think, I think it's gonna come down to. Andy being amenable to, to. Take care of all the issues that are on the list, prior to. The next town meeting, and I don't wanna wait till next February and have this fight, I think it should be done over the summer. And so, we're gonna have to work with Andy to try to see what he can and can't do financially. But, but the two major items that are the biggest ticket items is taxes and affordable housing, everything else I hope that he can do. And we can't know it until the DPW comes back in two weeks. And, and I don't know if anybody has any comments, but that's how I see it.
Yeah.
All the things that, that are within our purview, and we can work with, or talk with the other departments.
Todd, if I recall correctly, several meetings ago, when Town Council Flock was on, I had requested. And he had agreed that he would do it, put together a flow chart of the process of going through this on a generic basis. So that we would be able to identify the individual wickets, to which we all had to pass in order to get. To the final goal, which is acceptance of the road, and I still think. Um, it's valuable for CME, but it is equally valuable for. Engaging with other developers and understanding consistently within the board. Um, what that overall process is laid out in a, in a, frankly, in a process diagram.
Sure. I can uh, I can uh, I'll give Attorney Falk a call and see if he can go ahead and uh, for, I know he has one. Let's see if he can go ahead and forward that over to us.
But I, I'd really like to see that before the next meeting.
Very good. So Todd, you do have a list of requirements for road acceptance, right, that is a town, we have that list already.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's, that we can do, we don't need to wait on them to do that. So that's, that is the list that we're working off.
Sure, and it is important to know, just for, for everyone's verification, uh, the town is under no requirement and no. They're under no demand to accept the road, it's, it has to go to town meeting and then get voted upon and accepted. So we could get through every single item here, and it could be done to perfection. I mean, like chef's kiss perfection, but if it fails at town meeting, then it fails at town meeting. Um, I just don't want to have everyone have their hopes get built up, um, I'm a realist by nature, reason I'm a planner. Um, so I just want that to be kept in everyone's back of mind, that we could go through this entire endeavor. As long as it's taken, appearing on a decade. But if it gets to town meeting and fails to get the necessary votes, then it fails to get the necessary votes. Um, so it's just something that I would be an awful planner if I didn't make sure that everyone knew and kept in mind as a possibility, even if an outside possibility. It is a possibility.
Well, I, I would say. Um. Yes, but.
Hmm.
Um. I, I think what I've heard Mr. Ballow would say is that, a- and I, I, I've been in some of these calls, where we talked about. Back taxes as well as affordable housing, and I think a number of folks on this call, maybe not all, agree that. It, it, it maybe, it could be excluded, it maybe, but it's not for this group to decide. So, do I need, I mean. We're a small town, I mean, yes, we have a, th- there's a proper protocol for doing things, but. Is it appropriate for me to just go ask the selectman, we have this issue, it's been outstanding for ten years. We pay almost a million dollars in property taxes to the town of Bolton, well, I don't think we're making something unreasonable. There's been a group of people diligently trying, I think, all of us, including Mr. Bendetson. Want the roads to be accepted, we're trying to all work together to do what's needed. And we all feel that there are things that are outside road acceptance, which has to do with. Andy's or developers' financial entanglements with the, with the town, and I think as you guys just said. You have a list of road acceptance criteria. I don't think that list of criteria includes any other financial.
I, I think it does, I, I think one of those is pay all back taxes. So, that, right, like, I mean, we've accepted many roads in this town over the years. Like, this has been the most difficult one, right, no one's happy with the situation, okay, it's. Let's not, you know, this isn't town of Bolton's fault for how this is going, right? This board, right now, we are trying to work with you and the rest of the residents and the developer to come up with a plan. For how this is gonna go this year. Like, that, that's what I can say to you right now, there may be things that are out of the control of this board, that I can't help you. The, the taxes would be first and foremost of, of that, I, I don't know what the answer to that is.
Well, that seems like, that's a very significant.
I, I under- I understand. I understand.
Yes, yeah, yes, I, 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 I'm sure you do. What I'm trying to say is, I still feel, maybe my question is not for you, maybe I should go to the selectman and ask. For a list of all the things that's required in order for the roads to be accepted, I just think that's a very. Fair and reasonable request. I'm not saying, Michael, you have to sanction this or have to approve it. But I think, I just think it's reasonable as for the town, whoever that is, and I don't know anybody else, so, selectman's fine. And to your point, maybe, sounds like paying back taxes is actually a requirement. And it seems to me, that's been a sticking point for ten years, we can get the list of thirteen.
So Kai, so Kai, let's, let's just, let's table that for now, because we, let's get the final list in two weeks, I. Hopefully, hopefully Chairman Gore and the rest of them will push through the DPW and whoever else has to. Do the work to get the final list, um, as far as back taxes go, they've already started land court, they're already starting to try to get the, get their money back through land court. We're gonna have that argument later, and it's not worth us having this here, it's, these guys aren't the ones to talk to about this as far as fighting it, and, and land court started. They can win it through the legal system, and if, if they're doing the legal system from the, from the. The, the, the town perspective to uh, recoup their costs or recoup their tax, uh, back taxes. Then that shouldn't be a requirement to have to wait for that to be complete to, for, for road acceptance, in my opinion, so, we'll, we'll have that argument later. I don't think this is the forum for that, um, but it's certainly one of the regular road acceptance items. Um, but I think, I think the way this is going, I think we need to have that discussion further down the road. I, I, we're not gonna get anywhere with that tonight, I don't think, and I, I agree with your points, um, but I don't think, I don't think that we're gonna get anywhere with that discussion.
I agree, it sounds like it's up, I, I, I'm only speaking for myself now, just one resident. Taking up with the selectman, because it's, it is in the road acceptance criteria, and, and I just think this back taxes has been. The main issue, and, and also, I think to be fair, some of these things have been done in years past. And now we have to do some of these things again, because too much time has passed, and we still have these financial. Issues that were never resolved, so I just want to avoid going through all these in a very linear process. Go through the thirteen things, get the PD, DPW, and then we find out, oh, there are all these financial issues that were never gonna be resolved. So to, uh, to the town planner's point, it's possible the roads are never gonna be accepted, and I just resonate, I just rather know that now. Rather than keep going through this process, and I'm sure you guys don't, don't appreciate having a resident. Being on this call, saying these things, you don't wanna hear this either, just perpetuate this and only end up in the same place that we are now, so. But I take your point, I think what I'm hearing is that that aspect is beyond the purview of this board, so I'm okay with it, thank you.
Yeah, Kai, I, I would say, um, uh, you know, I don't see why it needs to be sequential either, but. Like, in regards to those items you talked about, you should probably just email Don Low, since he's. Kinda, you know, he's the town administrator and he. Manages the select board and everything, I mean, you should probably email these complaints directly to him. Cause, and the planning board will do what we can do, and then, I mean, he's gonna deal with, with the issue on a whole with multiple boards, so. I'm definitely, and I'm sure maybe John has probably talked to Don Low many times, but, um, I would definitely email him.
I guess, I guess my question to that, Eric, would be, I haven't pressed. Him or the select board about the two items, affordable housing and back taxes, because without the planning boards. I guess their recommendation to accept the road, is it, is it worth having that argument yet? I, I, I thought I was told not to do that until we got to a point where Andy took care of all the other pieces, so I. I had a discussion with Don, and, and even reached out to the, the, the selectman with very little. Response, but I haven't pushed much, or had many discussions, cause I was waiting till we got through a real checklist, which I hope we'll get next, next meeting, and then we can drive through that, so. If it's worth doing beforehand, I'm, I'm, I'm open to having ninety-five residents email Don Low tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, do that, I'm sure he'd appreciate it. I, I mean, my, 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 my only point is, uh, you know, I don't see why it needs to be totally sequential, I mean. And if you have questions about the tax, the back taxes, which we can do nothing about, fuck the Don low, fuck the Don.
I mean, you know, it's, it's a hypothetical question to them, but you're right, it's in land court now, right, the, the town is gonna. Probably recover some money, so. Probably recover some money. So, but I, I don't understand any of that. It's not. You know, I get no information about that. This board gets no information about that. So that's why I, you know, discussions like that in these meetings. Are not particularly helpful. As I said, we're trying to work through the issues that, you know, that we cover. Right? So we have the starting list. We'll hopefully have another list at the next meeting. And then we'll have, you know, what, what work is required. Right? So, uh, with that, um. I think we can move on.
Sorry, Mike, Michael, I'm sorry. One, one more and I'll.
Very brief, very brief.
Yeah. So with respect to this list, I think, uh, the item with the respect to the. Uh. Pond cleanup. Can I, maybe Andy, you can weigh in. I don't think I heard, I, I think what I heard the town say is that it needs to be done. And I think Andy, what I heard you say is that, well, I've already done it. So I'm not sure what, I, I, but I don't think the town is okay with that. So are you agreeing to, you'll do it again?
I'm gonna take a look at them. Um.
Okay, that's not the same thing as doing again. They didn't say, take a look at it.
So, so this again. Not a discussion for here. Right? The, the board has its position that things that are. Our contract engineer has pointed out need to be done, need to be done.
Okay. And how will you certify that it's been done?
Um, I think there is some method when they, they clean it out, you get receipts from a. Todd, maybe you know, I think, I think you get receipts or something.
Okay. So you need some proof that it's been done again.
We, we'll need proof. And again, DP, DPW will be part of this process.
Yeah, to the chair, I mean.
Yes.
Uh, we will have, um, correspondence from the DPW confirming that the work has been done, much like you can tell if you vacuum your house. You can tell if the, uh, if the catch basins have been cleaned out and the debris has been removed. That's pretty, pretty bog standard to do.
Okay. Excellent.
If I may answer the question. Uh, it, it, it could be like niche engineering set on as a standard item. I'm, I'm not sure they, you know, went out and looked at the Ponzi. I mean, the question is whether they're clean. Not, not. You know, you don't, if you just vacuumed, you don't need to vacuum again.
I, I, I agree. It is something, I think that's a boilerplate thing that they say. Any, you know, for road acceptance. The developer, one last time should clean them out. But again, DPW will look at it. So.
No, I mean, we'll, we'll look at it too. If, if it is, uh. If they're dirty again, we'll do them again.
Okay. Um, so we're all set with. This business and we'll circle back in two weeks at our next meeting on that. Um, with that, um. We have, uh, Todd, no more agenda items, but I did wanna take a little bit of time to talk with Austin kind of about. Um. You know, what's going on, what sorts of, and we discussed a little bit about what sorts of things the, the planning board kind of covers.
Sure.
Right? So, uh, I think first and foremost, you know, we'll, we're responsible for coming up with. Zoning bylaws and, and changes to Bolton zoning code. Um. We have not done many zoning bylaws for the past few years. Um. Partially because we've been busy with a lot of other things. Um, but also because we're in the middle of a, what's called a master plan, which. Maybe Bob can speak a little bit about that, where we, we hire an outside company to take a comprehensive look at. Um. You know, future growth of the town, needs of the town, things like that. I, I don't know, Bob, you wanna speak a little bit about master plan?
Yeah, that's basically it. Basically, we go through. Where the town is now. What projections there are in terms of. Um, demographics and development. Look at what the current zoning is. And what the implications are with an appropriate perspective on. Um, what we're hearing from the town in terms of. Um, the residents' vision of what the town ought to be. And that obviously deals with infrastructure, um, economic development, housing, um, et cetera, right down the line. And. In the recent past, the issue of. Um, climate change and the implications of that have become. Um, front and center in a lot of respects. But basically that gets put together. Um, and is soon to come out in sections in draft form. For a public review. I expect that we will have. At least one more forum and we're currently. In the process of a second survey. I know everybody hates surveys. I do too. But. Um, a lot has happened since. The last survey, it's called COVID and it's changed a number of things. Um, not the least of which is certainly housing, certainly infrastructure. On the need to look at. And so out of that will come. Um, certain recommendations. Um, which are couched in an implementation plan. Which was also done in the two thousand and six master plan. Um, and incidentally, many of them were accomplished. Um, but we have a ways to go on some of the ones that were recommended and have yet to be completed. And there are new ones that are coming up and changing in terms of priority, uh. Case in point, issues. Longstanding issues with transportation and one seventeen. Uh, the intersection four ninety-five, public water supply, public sewage. Um, not the least of which is, and Todd will, um, certainly. Agree with this, um. Where we stand with respect to the staff, the, the town staff. And their accommodations or lack thereof. Um, as well as issues with what used to be referred to as the senior center. Which frankly doesn't exist. Um. It's one small room that's rented out every now and then to the seniors. Um. And a community center. But, you know, with. The school going on, um, with changing demographics, with very, very tight accommodations. For the town staff. Um, and also looking at a more community approach. Um, to meeting rooms and activities outside of. What traditionally in Bolton has been a few. Um. Nonprofit, community organizations, sports and churches. And that's, you know, that's not atypical of a New England town. Um, but we're, I think, looking. Um, to the west, north, south, along four ninety-five. And also looking at what has happened. And how we need to take into consideration. What the growth process has been in other towns. That were where we are. And looking at where they have gone, what we can do either about accommodating that. Or making changes to reflect the vision of the town. So that's where we are in pretty big picture.
And, and, oh, sorry, Bob, but Austin, just to be clear, so, right, that, that is the master plan steering committee of that, they'll. They'll have recommendations and. The planning board will, you know, deliberate on those recommendations where it's, you know, like. Changing zoning regulations or, you know, bylaws or things like that. So that's, that's what the planning board will get out of. Out of their hard work.
Basically. One quick question if I may. Um, so the, the master plan spans more than just the planning board in terms of their recommendations.
Exactly. It's, it's comprehensive across the whole town.
The whole world.
Got it. And, and how, how often is that master plan revisited? Is it, is there a set cadence to it or is it? Uh, sort of best ever, every so often? To the chair, I mean?
Yes.
Uh, master plans, uh, Austin, master plans do have a lifespan. They have a working lifespan. Uh, realistically, it should be around every eight years or so. Realistically, it tends to be a decade, sometimes 12 years. Ours is, uh, well past the, the best buy date. As it turns out, I would encourage you because, uh, you're a very smart guy, take a look at the, uh, the previous master plan. Uh, you, then you'll get a feel and a jive for how these, uh, how these documents are assembled and the way that they're angled and targeted. Uh, effectively, the way it works is the master plan, uh, constructs the vision. The overall kind of, uh, the overall landscape and the compass of what direction to go. Uh, the planning board does all the minutia. They do the finer scalpel level work, the ones that act with the more precision and guiding. Uh, the overall development goals to be in line with the master plan's priorities. That's how it ought to work. And that's why, uh, it's my belief, that's why the planning board hasn't really constructed any master plan, any, I'm sorry, any bylaw revisions. Uh, because we've been really holding our breath for the master plan to, to finally be assembled. Then we can start marching in line with what the master plan guides us towards, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Austin, I mean. In answering, if I can, your question about how often is it revisited? Out of the master plan comes the implementation matrix. And specific recommendations are made and they vary in level of detail. Um, some of them are very specific. Last one recommended. Um, the library and the change in. In public safety building and that sort of thing. And that was very specific. But ultimately. In most cases, an implementation committee is put together. To make sure that everybody is taking into consideration the roadmap, as it were, the master plan. Um, when they develop their programs. And certainly the, the planning board is critically important. Um, in terms of taking what is understood about where the town is and the roadmap to where it's going. And turning that into, um, bylaws and regulations and.
Exactly.
Where.
And so that's, you know, Austin, that's kind of all, um, big picture stuff like, so. You know, meeting to meeting, a lot of what we spend our time on are, um, special permits, um, of which there were two tonight. What are called public hearings that we continued and didn't really discuss. There are things called A and Rs, approval not required, which is where we approve, um. Housing lots. Um, so basically if people wanna, um. Split up a parcel of land into lots, they. By state law, they have a process called approval not required, where if they meet the. The Bolton zoning codes, they're able to carve off a, a lot and build a house on it.
Exactly. That, to the chair, I mean. Uh, it's, yeah, that process is, it's a standard subdivision. Think of a loaf of bread. You have a very large parcel of land and you can take off slices. Each one of which can be used towards a different end, a different piece of toast or maybe, uh, sandwich, whichever. Uh, additionally, there are items, uh. That, as you mentioned before, there are special permits. The big thing to keep in mind with those, that there are of course regs to go with them. Um, I have plenty of information. If you drop by my office, I would be more than happy to give you a crash course and just throw you off the boat. Um, but I would love to talk with you. I love talking planning. Ask anyone on this board. If you get me talking, I likely don't shut up. Um, you may regret coming by, but it will be education, I promise. Um, with that, I've got plenty of, I've got plenty of guidance for you. I can connect you with a bunch of different resources. From what's called a CPTC, which is Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. Um, they've got a lot of really good. Um, educational material for folks that are brand new to land use regulatory boards, whether they're joining a planning board like this or a zoning board of appeals. Even, they even touch on concom, uh, even though that's not strictly their, their lane. Uh, but there's plenty of resources out there and I don't want you to feel that you're overwhelmed. I don't want you to feel like you're. You know, kind of lost in this. Don't worry, just. If you just pay attention, some folks that have been here for a good while. You'll be, you'll be in great shape. And if you have any specific questions, that's why you've got strange people like planners that are here to help you. Okay?
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
What I, what I will say is kind of the last thing that occupies more of our time than I'd like is, is kind of subdivision. Uh, babysitting. And so you saw some of that tonight. So. Anytime there's kind of an active subdivision in town, um, they go through an entire. You know, approval process with us and then. We, you know, are checking in periodically with them. And for. Time immemorial, most of the. Uh, subdivisions went very smoothly. The past few years, we've had two that have been, um, pretty troublesome. So Century Mills Estates is one. And, uh, Moderator Way, which is off of eighty-five is the second one. So just some background on those. So for CME, um. Who we talked about tonight, they're, that developer kind of, um. I, I think ran into financial problems midway through his process and it's just been kind of a. You know, a long slog. Um, the residents are currently trying to get their roads accepted. Right now their roads are private roads, means they don't get any town services on those roads. So we're working with them to. To get roads approved, which is another thing that the planning board does is, is road approval.
Well, we make recommendations.
Recommendations and it goes, everything, everything we do is a recommendation that goes before town meeting in the spring.
Got it.
Um. The other.
Uh, does that get voted on when it goes to town meeting? It gets voted on by the selectmen?
It gets voted on by, by the residents.
By the voters. Okay.
Yeah. So we make recommendations and this is, this is town government, right? This is Massachusetts.
Direct democracy, right?
You haven't lived here before. Um. The other, um, area, uh, moderator way, we are currently, um, in the middle of a lawsuit with that developer. About unfinished work that. That they haven't done on that, um, in that subdivision. So we're trying to. Claw back money from them, uh, in order to complete that work. Um, we don't. We generally, because that's in a lawsuit, we generally don't talk too much about that one during meetings unless there's something to bring up. Um, other active subdivisions. So, um, Todd, there is tad more than I mentioned, which is Goose Pond Path off of one seventeen. Um, do we have any other ones at the moment?
Um, none that immediately jumped to mind that have had movement on them lately.
We accept, did we accept the road on, um. The one off of Sugar Road by Golden Run?
I don't believe, I don't believe so yet, sir.
No, okay. Um, so anyway, there's, I think there, yeah. So that's it for, for some divisions. Um, we're currently this. Uh, this one on South, South Bolton Road. So we're in the process of doing the special permit for that. Once that's approved. They'll start work and then we'll have this, this, you know, periodic management, um, check in with them. Well, for the most part, it's, it, it's usually, it goes quiet like this. This one is a six lot division. I mean, CME was originally supposed to be a hundred and something lot division. So.
Yeah. And this one here that he just described, that's only a sixth, it's only proposed as a six lot subdivision. So it's not a mammoth level development like some that was proposed earlier. Uh, but of course, um, if anyone has any, if you have any questions about any of this stuff, feel free to give me a ring. Um, if you like, you can drop on my office. My door is always open. Um, and I don't just say that to say that, I mean that. So just feel free to drop by whenever you need it and I'll help you out with anything that I can. Okay?
Sounds good. That's, that's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Um, anything else that anyone wants to discuss?
Uh, guys. Oh, you go first, Bob.
Okay, um, one of the things that Todd sent out was. The Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Um, is putting out a. Fiscal twenty-three planning assistant grant. Um, solicitation. And it's basically to support planning or look at. Things that would affect planning. Background, et cetera. Um. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five. Cost sharing grant, which is not atypical of EOC and, um. It goes up to fifty K for an individual grant. Um. One of the things that I've been pushing and I believe I distributed it some time ago. Is looking into what Harvard Mast has been doing. In terms of open space and residential development. Um, basically under the guidance, um. Of, of, of very, very well-known national, if not international planner, um. Mr. Arant. And. He has offered to take a look at Bolton. Bylaws and regulations and also did as what he did. In Harvard, um, have a, at least a one day, if not a two day seminar. For all interested people, including obviously Planning Board Selectmen Conservation Commission. Um, what have you. Um, to go over that and as part of it do a charrette on the approach that is taken. To, um, implementing such an approach. Which is basically a philosophical approach that says, let's try to do things. To maximum, um, maximize. Available residences, but maintain the. Character of the town. And by the way, allow different types of housing, um, not just. Single family residents, acre and a half, four and a half acres, but start looking at more compact approach. Um, sort of an extension of our Bosford. Um, program. So. I personally think that we should apply for this. Um. I'm not sure at this point. For his particular piece of it, where the other twenty-five percent would come from. Um. If it's on the order of what he has proposed for a fee, I will personally pick up that twenty-five percent.
Um, to the chair, I mean. On top of, on top of, uh, what Mr. Romer said, uh, this, this individual is also, he is internationally known. Uh, I did see references from some of my colleagues over at ISO Carp, which is the International Society, International Society of City and Regional Planners. I have a couple of friends over in Belgium and they've heard of this gentleman. So he's, he's not, uh, without renown in that, that discipline.
So this is a matter of. Todd or somebody needs to apply for this grant? Is that? Is that the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it has to go through the town.
Is it a? Is it a comprehensive like thing that's going to take hours and hours and hours to apply for, or is it like? Hours and hours and hours to apply for, or is it like, uh? Something.
EEO, EEOCs, they tend to be either drought or flood. These either tend to be very easy or they ta, or they can be extremely onerous to manage. Um, I'll take a look at. Yeah, I'll take a look, uh, a bit. Once I, I'll, I'll begin the process and see exactly what we're in for. And then once I get a feel for exactly how much time this will take that I can allocate towards it, I'd be happy to do that. This is a very worthwhile effort to get into, for sure.
Yeah, there's good guidance on the advertisement, um, from the state.
Yes.
Um, Todd, were you getting an assistant planner?
I wish, I guess, I wish.
Uh, there was a discussion there, right? No, that didn't.
Not an assistant planner, this would be someone to assist with the administrative aspects of the job. Something like, um, working with mailings, notifications, uh, doing a lot of, a lot of that.
Grant work wouldn't fall under that.
No, that'd be a little bit too targeted unless it depends on the candidate that we receive. If we have a candidate come before here that's interested in this sort of career, you could be gosh darn sure that I'd love to just kind of. See what they're made of in terms of writing and then, uh.
Yeah.
And kind of toss them some work there for sure.
Okay, so it sounds like you're gonna, Todd, you'll take a look at the application and see if it's something that. Because this, so I'm looking at your emails, it's the May twenty-sixth.
Uh, yeah, it's real close.
Yeah, it's, it's by the skin of, uh, by the skin of our teeth, I think. But, um, I'll take a look at it and if it turns out to be too onerous, then it might not fit. But if it happens to be something I've got room in my schedule for, I'll be applying.
Okay.
And there is a lot of information out there that we can use, um, in order to put this together.
Yeah.
Um, Eric, you wanted to say something as well?
Yeah, I was just gonna request from Todd that, um, you could package up like the documents and stuff for each meeting. Like, I don't know that you, maybe you sent out that, um. The response from niche, but I, I might have just missed it, I don't know.
I did, I promise.
Yeah. I probably just missed it, but I get a ton of emails. So, um. If I know past planners like either zip everything up or if you could just send us an email with like links. So it's all in one location?
Yeah, all the items that, uh, that we discussed, they are on the current projects tab.
Yeah, I know they're on the, yeah.
Yeah, but just like documents that we're discussing in, in a, in a given meeting would be.
I can do that.
Yeah, if it's all in one location, that would be good. And I didn't see that.
Response from Nick John, the current.
Yeah, I'm looking at that now and it looks like that was, that was sent to me and Pete.
Oh, okay. Just make, if I send those items out, uh, to the, to the board at large, uh, due to open meeting law, you'll find this out soon, uh. Uh, Mr. Gunner, that, uh, we can't deliberate on items outside.
Understood.
Meetings. So as long as I send those out and I do address it to the entirety of the board, just make sure that if you're gonna be communicating with. Uh, communicating with other members of the board, it has to be on an individual, individual by individual basis. You can't talk to, uh, yourself and a couple of your, a couple of your board members at the same time, because that. Can't do that.
Yeah, no, that's, you know, I totally understand that, but it's, um. I would like to review documents beforehand if possible and, um, yeah. Like I said, sometimes it's hard to like search, I have some emails. If you send things piecemeal, it's tough to find, so.
Sure, not, yeah, I can do that, no problem.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. It's a huge favor. I mean, Eric, come on.
And there are a few that are very last minute.
Hmm, yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll vote positive for the budget steer.
Well, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, any other? Discussion for the board? Um, I see Mr. Martha joined us, um, so we have continued your hearing until our next meeting on May twenty-fourth. But. Uh, other than that, um, I think we are finished and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, Michael, did I, did I just miss, uh, our, mine is, uh, pushed?
Yeah, so to May twenty-fourth, so, um, I think we received, uh, your Sherry letter and. The lawyer was reviewing it and. Um, that should be all set pretty soon. Um, assuming he has no issues with it and then, um, hopefully we can kind of discuss everything at the next meeting.
Got it, understood.
Okay.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Good night, sir.
Um, so again, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Very good. I'll begin now and I'll entertain a vocal vote to adjourn. I'll begin with Chairman Gore.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Romer.
Hi.
Mr. Gunner.
Hi.
Mr. Nayland.
All right.
Mr. Barr.
All right.
I was like, don't leave me hanging. Okay, uh, with that.
I was, I was gonna say like Pete. Thank you for everything, buddy.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my gosh, yeah, that cannot.
You hung on till the end here. I can't believe it.
I, I'm not accepting this motion as complete yet until we haze him on the way out. That just needs to be done. Uh, no, no.
Yeah, great. Good luck with everything. Thank you for, for all your service to the board. I know this wasn't the most fun year to be chair.
Oh, it's, you know, I appreciate, it's been great working with everyone. Um, I enjoyed actually being chair a lot more than. I thought I would, even despite some of the things we went through and, um. You know, I wish Charlie the best. I'll still be in town for a while, so I might, you know, join. Uh, a future meeting as, as a resident to, uh, to listen in if there's something of interest, but, uh, wish everybody the best and Bolton's a great town, you know, I'd, uh. They don't wanna leave, but you know, it's personal, uh, uh, things.
I, 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 I've been on the board for like, I don't know, nine, eleven, twelve years, I'm not in short. I think your meeting. You know, a few months back that you were the chair of was the most uncomfortable meeting for a chair I've ever seen, so. So you, 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 uh, deserve to retire.
You, you endured that, that, the, that excoriation with grace, I'll say.
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, it was very, very, uh, Oliver North Lake, um.
Uh, it's, it's been really great working with you, Pete. Now, now you're just a normal resident, so I don't have to treat you special. Life's good.
Absolutely right. Well, cheers to everyone. Thank you so much.
All right, so I think we're all set then. So good night, everyone. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Wish you guys, take care, everyone.
Take care.
Bye.